Hello? We're not started yet? Is this?
Okay. I'm sorry, who am I speaking to?
This is Maureen.
Hi, Maureen, I didn't have the Zoom on my computer. I was supposed to download it. I've never done Zoom. This is the first time, so I decided to call in. Thank you, Maureen.
Okay. We'll be with you in a minute. We're just on mute.
Hey, Maureen.
Hello, this is Anita Bailey.
Hi. Hi, we're just gonna wait just a couple more minutes. We're waiting for a couple other members, I think, to join.
Maureen, who's on and who's running?
I'm on, Kristen is on, Mrs. Bailey is on. And you're on. I think that's it.
No, there's a...
One more?
Yeah.
Oh, Cory's on. And I got a message from Sandy that she'd be on in a minute. She should be on any minute.
Hey, Maureen, do you have a beginning, opening thing for this meeting if I'm the one doing it?
I do, but if you want, I'll read it if you'd like.
That's fine, that'll work. I appreciate it.
Easier.
Yep.
And Tony did say he may not be able to join. So, there's one person on I have not identified, I think. I'm gonna stop sharing for a second. There we go. Yeah, so we only have three on right now.
So, are we gonna get a quorum?
Sandy's about to join. Oh, and there she is.
Sorry about that, I was trying to get everything done outside chore-wise before the rain.
So, I'm not sure we have a, somebody who's identified as a user one, I'm not sure who that is. User one, are you one of the, are you a member of the commission or someone watching? And it looks like we just lost the call from the applicant. I had a caller, caller, the applicant was on the telephone and she has just disconnected.
See if she calls back.
Yeah.
We still don't know who user one is either, do we?
No, we don't know who user one is. And I'm wondering if she tried to get on, on the computer and maybe is on both. Bear with us for a couple of seconds here. Nope, we lost user one. No, we still need one more number. Christine said she'd be on.
Hello?
Hi. Is that, is Bailey? Okay, we're just waiting for one, another user.
Okay.
Another commission member.
No, I just got, my call was dropped, so I had to call back again.
The meeting hasn't started yet, we're waiting for one more commission member to join.
Okay, no problem.
We do have someone showing who just says the letter H. If you're muted, could you just identify who you are as H? Especially if you're a member of the commission? And I understood the neighbor was gonna be on too, but I haven't heard from him today either.
Oh, I think they had, um, a car problem or something, he told me, I don't know. I haven't seen him either.
Okay. Christine had said she was gonna join, I just sent her a message to double check. I'm sending messages to the members as I can.
Okay.
Looks like I've got another phone connecting, if you give me one minute, hopefully.
Okay.
We have someone else on here in a minute. We have somebody on iPhone, could you identify yourself? Nope, they're still connecting. I have two muted devices and I'm unable to tell who's on, if it's members of the commission, could you identify yourselves?
This is Christine Mizada, I am now figured out this and I am present.
Ah, great, so we now have a forum. So, you want me to go ahead and read this, Nelson?
Yeah, start it off, please.
Tony and Lenny not available. Good evening, this is Maureen Hussey, Staff Layer is on for the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a special meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals as announced at the regular meeting of July 27, 2021, noticed in the New Britain Herald and posted with the town clerk. As indicated on the agenda for this meeting, this is a remote access by Zoom video and telephone conference. Meeting access was provided and posted on the town website for commission members, applicants, and other interested parties to participate. For those listening, I would ask you to mute your device or phone if you are able so that we do not get any background noise. Please also use a handset when available. Speaker phones or Bluetooth may cause interference. When it is time for individuals to speak, I ask you to unmute your phone and identify yourself. If a number of people ask to speak, then we ask that you be patient until you return. Two very important reminders to everyone participating. Every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, we must be careful not to speak over one another so that everyone who is listening can hear what is being said and we have a clear record. For this reason, when it comes time for the board members to comment and ask questions about the agenda item before any action is taken and then to vote on the agenda item, I'll take roll call as necessary. Also, this meeting is being recorded and the recording will be posted on the town's website. And now I'm going to take the role. Chairman Frank Langio was excused. Lenny Tubbs also not present, we believe, just verifying, looking at this. Okay, also not present or excused. Nelson Braca.
Here.
And I believe Acting as Chair, Sandra Capola. Cory Whiteside.
Here.
Ryan Zealich.
Here.
And Christine Mizada.
Present. Again, apologies for technical problems.
And Ryan also has jumped on and Hunter Mathina asked to be excused as well.
Thank you for the email reminder.
We were worried about a quorum, thank you for joining.
No problem. The time threw me off, so it's okay.
So, this is a special public hearing due to a notice mistake for this item, which has since been corrected and it's ZVA 2021-19393 Main Street East Berlin, map 23-2, block 152, lot 7. I'm not gonna say her name right, I'm sure. Anita M. Bailey, property owner, is requesting a variance for a northerly side yard of 17 feet when 30 feet is required in the R43 zone per Berlin zoning regulations, section 5A10, for a one-story addition for an enlarged living area and full bath. And Anita is on the phone. So, if you can describe our application, I'm going to bring up a picture to show on the screen of your house.
Okay, can I start talking now or?
Sure.
Well, I'll go to the chair, actually, the chair could be running this meeting, sorry.
Most definitely, Anita, please. Go right ahead.
Okay, the, okay, what I feel is I'm very attached to this house, it was built 1930. I'm trying to keep the structure of the house in the period that it was built, also to not to disrupt the view from the street coming southbound and northbound. I'm hoping that I can build off my northeast side of the house, off the driveway, I think you guys all have pictures of it. It's off my kitchen window. I have a very small kitchen and I wanted to enlarge that into a larger living space. And there's three windows, if you notice, from the back. The reason that I chose this area is because if you look in the backyard, there is a backdoor entrance in this beautiful awning that came with the house when it was built 1930 and I would like to maintain that because I think that's really a beautiful sight. I also, if you notice, to the other side of the backyard, there's a hatchway that leads into my basement and I really would like not to disrupt that. And then we go around to, like, in the right side of the house, if you're looking from the front of the house, there is a solarium that has a lot of wonderful, beautiful windows that also in that location, there are two large trees and that would mean that if I have to build in that area, I would have to disrupt that whole view and I think it would be a sore thumb from looking from the driveway going by on the street. So, I would like, I would like to keep the view off the street level and this is why I chose to go from the kitchen. It's minimal disruption and it will maintain the house in the period that it was built in 1930, which is a very rare find, I can't find another house like this one in this area and I'm very proud to be the owner. And that's about it, that's my description of why I feel that having it to the backside of my kitchen is one of the best areas. And my house is pretty far back, so it doesn't really disrupt my neighbor. Ryan and Shelley came over to me and they were very happy for me and agreed and they're also building, so we're, you know, trying to keep the neighborhood up to the full, you know, status standard. So, that's my, if anybody have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer. Hello?
Everyone's just looking for one second.
Sure.
So, this is Maureen speaking, I hope that you're seeing the plot plan on your screen. The driveway comes down along the northerly side of the, of the house. The addition is proposed to align with the northerly sidewall of the house and extend back 25 feet to then extend to the rear from the kitchen.
12 feet.
Yeah, 12 feet deep, but 25 feet long.
Maureen, so this is Nelson, so the house is already over the 30-foot marker to begin with?
Yes.
And she's just going back with it, like you said, 25 feet?
Right.
For a living room and a bathroom?
It's not a living room, it's an extension of the kitchen.
Oh, okay.
The kitchen that I have is very, very small, it was built in 1930, so it was very condensed.
Is the map on everyone's screen?
It's on mine, yeah.
Maureen, did you, Maureen, did you give them all the photos that I dropped off to so they can see the view of the house from the front side and back?
I just scrolled through the photos on the screen. And they were emailed as well.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can't zoom, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I have one. On the application, I think the hardship was listed, or it was described as not wanting to affect the dormer on the back, but this Cory Whiteside, and but the, but the, the addition seems like it does encroach... I'm just not following the description versus the, 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 the plan. The, the 12 feet, you know, does actually encroach in on the part of the house that has the dormer.
No, the 12 feet is the width of the 20 by 12, it's not the height.
The way it appears on the plans is that, you know, you can see the dormer, I just don't understand the comment about it not encroaching on the dormer.
It's not the dormer, I'm talking about the awning over the door. If you see the picture of the backyard of the back of the house where the entrance to the door is, there is that brick and the awning, the wooden awning over it, not the dorm. The dormer upstairs would not be touched at all.
And so, you, you don't want, you don't want to modify the awning area?
Right. It would, the addition will be, you know, next to that wall right there, there'll be a door right there, it's in the floor.
The offset, the offset basically lays at the, at the border of your awning.
Right, but it, it still has three to four, four inches. We measured it, I think it's in the design of the, of the house. And the way that the architectural designer designed it, the awning would be incorporated to the roof part of the new addition.
So, the picture I have up now is the floor plan, or the, the planned view and this would be the back door in this area. But this is the existing window with the room coming off the back and then the stairs to the backyard, small gap.
Right.
And the deck extended at stair level here.
Right.
Does that help?
Yeah.
The brick is, yeah, the brick is there, it's gonna, it's gonna be taken down and then there'll be a stair connecting to, two, I think, or three steps going up in the center of the new addition. The other section is gonna be like, I can plant flowers and do whatever, but still maintain the awning. The beautiful wooden awning that, you know, they, they don't make workmanship like that any longer. So, I really don't want to disrupt that, it's beautiful.
But again, it's, you know, you, you're called to add, you're called to describe your hardship on the application and...
Well, I'm sorry if I missed.
Not sure that desire is to, to keep a, a, an architectural element of your house is necessarily a hardship.
Okay, I don't, okay. But the, the structure is that my hardship is, I wanted to design it towards the back so it doesn't disrupt the view from the, from driving southbound and northbound. I don't want to have a sore thumb, you know, this new, this house was built 1930, then you have something contemporary sticking out to the south side part of the house. So, that's my main hardship, is not to destroy the, the view of the house, to maintain the 1930 look with just adding a little kitchen to enlarge it a little bit. Because I'm not enlarging it, I'm not making like a huge room, it's just enlarging the kitchen. So, my hardship is the view of the exterior of the house from the front to the left side and the right side, to try to keep minimal amount of disruption. That's my hardship. Who am I speaking to anyways? I can hear your name.
This was Commissioner Whiteside.
You commissioned me.
So, this is Christine Mizada, I have a quick question. I mean, obviously, the age of the house, the zoning laws were, were implied, like, put in place after the house was already built, correct?
That would be correct, this is Maureen.
So, that, I mean, could that be legitimate addition to the hardship definition?
Um, that is a, a, something you could support, a positive vote utilizing that information as well?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from anybody?
I have none. Although I would do, see if there's any staff comments.
I'm sorry, Sandy, you were really muffled there.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if there was any staff comments.
Um, no, I would just comment that the house was built prior to zoning regulation and it's a brick structure with some architectural elements that are on the house, but nothing, no further comment. I thought this was a pretty self-explanatory application that didn't really warrant much comment.
Thank you.
There's no other questions, I'll ask somebody entertain a motion to close this portion of the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Christine Mizada, I second.
Motion carried and seconded, so we move over to old business now. Okay, old business. Number 2021-19, oh, sorry, Maureen, apologize. Was there anybody, any other person in favor of the, the...
Application.
Application? Anybody in opposition to the application? Okay, so now, but the motion was made in second anyways, but there was nobody in favor or opposed to, so... Starting with old business now, number 2021-19, 393 Main Street East Berlin, map 23-2, block 152, lot 7. Anita M. Bailey, property owner, requesting a variance for the northerly side yard of 17 feet when 30 feet is required in the R43 zone per Berlin zoning regulations 5A10 for a one-story addition for an enlarged living area and full bath. Do I have a motion to accept this application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application. Commissioner Capola, sorry.
I'll second the, I'll second that, it's Ryan Zealich.
Okay, Nelson speaking again, is there anybody, any other words, any other info, any, you know? Okay, Nelson speaking again, um, is there anybody, um, any other words, any other info, any, you know, anything we need to speak about, anybody have any comments?
What are the other members thinking on the hardship question?
Um, I was looking at it honestly from the same, uh, point of view, um, when Christine had brought up and Maureen kind of confirmed as well that the fact of when the structure was originally built, um, could be, you know, could, could be used as a reason. Um, I don't wanna say used as a reason, but, you know, could help substantiate and back an approval for that. Um, and I do look at, you know, the, the architecture of the house and I think if, if it's possible, you know, not so much that's, that's the hardship, but I look at it as, you know, when the house was built, the, the zoning laws weren't there, it's not really extending further than what's kind of already out there. So I felt that, you know, this was, um, acceptable to me to, you know, as, as to approve.
Commissioner Grassa also, Cory, I, I understand where you're coming from with this and we do take these things on a, for, you know, every, you know, whatever basis we come on, on each of these. You know, is the var- is the, uh, is the hardship, uh, a little here or there probably, but she's trying to keep the aesthetics of the house the same from the street. I don't really think it's bothering anybody by doing this, but again, that's my opinion.
Just eliciting, eliciting the opinions, that's all.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Commissioner Grassa, again, anybody else with any questions?
I'm good.
Okay, Maureen, I think we should take a vote then.
Okay, um, Chairman Grassa?
Yay.
Uh, Commissioner Capola?
Yay.
Commissioner Whiteside?
Abstain.
Commissioner Zellik?
Yay.
And Commissioner Mizada?
Yay.
The motion carries with four, so zero and one abstention.
And that would be the end of it, right?
Yeah, that's the only item on the agenda and nothing can be added to the agenda of a special meeting.
Okay, can I hear a motion to, um, end the meeting?
Commissioner Capola, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Zellik was second.
Made in second and end of the meeting, thank you guys. I know it was last minute and crazy hour, but I appreciate everybody showing up.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you folks, good night.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you, I appreciate everyone joining.
Thank you also, Maureen, for the help, I appreciate it.
Maureen?
Yeah.
I, um, what does this mean?
That means that the variance was approved and we'll be getting a letter of approval, um, over the next week or so and then you'll have to file a variance in the, the variance documents in the land records.
Okay, thank you so very much. As we proceed. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Weekend, thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
Was she, was she crying there, Maureen?
She was.
Yeah, listen, I, I understand Cory's thing, you know, but we get a lot of these that come up in front. I mean, if half, if half her street or her neighbor right there was really against it, I, I understand and I get that that's kind of a questionable, you know, uh, the hardship, but, you know, the house was built when it was built, it's really not doing anything, she's not hiding anything, she's expanding her kitchen. I'm sure she wants the house to look beautiful from all angles, uh, you know, it is what it is.
I think, um, well, I don't know, we're actually still being recorded, so, oh dear, wait a minute, let me stop that. Um.